But we'll get started because Marcus has given us an extremely aggressive agenda for today. I don't know how we could get through that in two meetings, let alone in one. So let's just get started and Marcus, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, so everywhere I'm going, I'm trying to really explain what's the big picture for this work. And so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide, but this is really the current picture of what we're trying to do with this work. And it is aligned to the Leadership for Learning Standards that Trevor and I are doing in our work at the University of Washington. And most of the work that I'm doing on a day-to-day basis is really focused in on this first box furthest to the left, the self-reflection, engaging conflict, working on collective action, and trying to balance power and decision-making. And so our present work with you all is really rooted on those first two pieces, the self-reflection and being in a place to really engage in difficult discussion, engage conflict. We're using, in order to do that, courageous conversation as one of the tools for this work. And so the courageous conversation protocol has three pieces to it. One is the compass, which I'm thankful for Raymond last week brought up the compass in one of his responses. That is the kind of connections that we're trying to make because the protocol is about using the compass, using the four agreements, and using the six conditions to move dialogue forward about race. And that's important because if we're trying to really do this equity work that we're describing, we have gaps in teaching and learning, we have gaps in the way our systems disciplinary processes work, we have gaps in all sorts of places that we need to be willing to see and isolate race as part of the conversation. So much of the work that I'm doing right now with you, with Cabinet, with leaders, with any schools that are brave enough to let me work with them at this point, is really on how do we get to a place to where we can engage in meaningful conversations about race? And so as a board, where we've been so far is we've unpacked the four agreements of courageous conversation. We did some work on personal local media. We heard you all telling your stories about how you've experienced race. We did some work last time really focusing in on isolating race. And today is really about normalizing social construction and multiple perspectives. And so I'm asking you, and you don't have to necessarily respond to this right now, but I want you to be thinking about how are you going to personally keep these first two conditions and the one that we're unpacking today front and center as you do this? Because it's not, we experience one condition and then we move on, but each of these conditions are supposed to be skills that we're adding to our repertoire so that at the end of this, we are locking in all six of these conditions on a regular basis. So I want you to just be thinking about how are you still focusing on personal local media today? How are you still isolating race today? And as we go into this next part, how do we normalize social construction and multiple perspectives? So what I do want you to respond to is where do you find yourself on the compass? You looked at the agenda, you probably looked at some of the things that I sent for you to read. Where do you find yourself on the compass right now as it relates to this work and this topic? And I'll ask Reverend Davis because he's the one closest to me on the Hollywood Squares.
You would, and I'd say I'm in the center. Because if you look at it and what you're saying, how are we going to look at it through the continuing of this with the first three points that we made? And it's always thinking, acting, feeling, and believing. But it also deals with the moral, intellectual, relational, and emotional piece. It's something that I have to work on constantly every day. I have to live it every day, and I have to act on it every day. And I have to be thankful, thinking ahead of how I can approach others who may not be where I'm at to get them to, just to get a glimpse of where I'm coming from. And it's a heartfelt thing, it's dear and near to my heart. And I believe that we can achieve it. And I'm right in the center, like that bullseye when you're fully darked. It's circling right around all in there. It's dealing with all four.
Yeah, thank you. Martha?
I think I'm in thinking. And I don't know, I don't know when I'll ever get out of thinking about this because it's not my lived experience.
Thank you. Raymond?
Sure. So I usually, as I mentioned last week, I tend to hang around in that upper right-hand corner, the intellectual thinking. Because I'm always thinking about theories, approaches, models, that kind of stuff. So I'm always comparing the literature that we've read to other viewpoints and other models, other theories that I'm constantly battling with. And so the colorblindness, there's a theory that supports it. And there's a lot of people of color that supports that. So I'm kind of going back and forth in my mind, even on just that one topic. But this week, I've been over in the bottom left-hand corner, the emotional piece, especially when I was reading about students of color, African-American students that are not wanting, the parents having that mistrust of schools and not wanting to send their kids back, knowing that their kids need to be in school, right? So it's a kind of a moral dilemma that they're facing. So I really felt that. So I kind of bounce around a little bit. And then a little bit up to the upper left-hand corner, the beliefs or the soul or the moral piece as well. So thanks.
Thank you. Graciela?
I'd say I'm somewhere between moral believing and thinking intellectual. I do have what I think, I guess, or is a strong abiding sense of right and wrong as it relates to the topic. I think there's a lot of information to take in. And so I'm definitely still in the thinking intellectual camp as well. I think there's a lot of different perspectives and approaches and just data out there that I don't know yet. And so I think it's important to continue to take that in.
Thank you. Norm?
Hi, everyone. I'm kind of like Don. I feel like I'm in the center, but I spend a little more time in the thinking and feeling part of it. And maybe a little less in the moral and acting part. But I bounce around a little bit to all of those quadrants. But again, more in the thinking and feeling part.
Yeah, and there's never really, and it seems like you guys get it. There's not a right place to be on the compass. But our awareness of where we're at on the compass will be really helpful for us in engaging with others and taking the time to really understand where other folks are at is going to be really important. And so my goal and the agenda, part of the thing was, at the time that I was building the agenda, it was right after the last meeting, I was definitely in more of an emotional space and wanting to get to kind of a doing space and like, okay, put in all this stuff together for us to look at. And also, I think it's an important part of my job is to get people who tend to be one place on the compass to move and experience other places on the compass. Because really, we make the best decisions and work in partnership with others when we find our way to the center, to where we can look at an issue intellectually, when we can look at it morally, emotionally, in relationship with other people, and come to the best conclusion drawing from all of those spaces. If we make, like the article that I gave you about the school reopening, if we make a decision without really being aware of how that is emotionally impacting members of our community, that's going to do something. It may do harm to relationships with people, right? Even though it may be the right decision to make. So we have to be constantly aware of all of these pieces. What I wanted to not forget to do was to go back to the last chapter and hear Graciela's, the quote that Graciela had pulled out of the chapter on condition two. So Graciela?
Sure. So on page 106, there's a quote in the middle of the page, and it's a message that another senior, a graduating black senior wrote to the author. He says, or she says, "To Glenn, I wish you the best of luck in this crazy place." As we both know, because you are black, you can only achieve as much as a white by being educated." And it goes on from there, but it was that last sentence that really struck me. I think that's something that I've certainly seen and heard and have said myself to others, to young people as they're starting their work-life and trying to navigate the workplace. I think it's something that's always been a very real thing to me, that you have to play the game to get ahead in your career. And so playing the game is making sure that you fit in with the majority group of the employer. And so that just really struck me. And I know that a lot of people have felt that and who have heard that message as well. So it was just interesting to have read that in this chapter.
Thank you. Respond to the passage that Graciela picked out. So Reverend Davis?
Yeah, that was my first passage, but I went with the other one. And it's something that, that letter was really hitting home because of how we have to navigate through, even though we are the only, and knowing the history of this, he was the only black within a white school environment. And he had to really, really go above and beyond. And it's just like even in the workplace, like Graciela said. And it's real life experience. And it's something that, and it's, you know, that part, you can achieve as much as a white by being educated. And that's something that, you know, I strive for all the time is to educate myself so that I can be in that achievement mode. But it's even hard when you have obstacles sometime put in your way by not receiving. Does that make sense? But I agree with what Graciela was saying as well. That's something I experience a lot.
Martha?
Just watching the team here for a minute. When I read that, it made me sad to think that, to think that everybody doesn't get a fair shot. And I think that's what our work as school board members, we try to make sure to accomplish. Or at least, that's what I try to make sure to accomplish, is that everybody gets a fair shot. And nobody should have advantage over any other student or any other person. And that's the way I felt about that sentence.
Raymond?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that one. I never viewed education as trying to fit in to a dominant culture. I saw education as more as improving the quality of life for myself and my family. And so, but I do know that, you know, like I mentioned in high school before, that high school counselor telling me, you know, education is not for you. You're not built for that, you're not wired for that, and so forth. So I do understand the sentiment behind that statement. But again, I've never equated getting an education to being white or being successful, more successful in the white dominant culture.
Norm? You got a, what did Don say? Hit the switch?
Yeah, I did a Martha. Okay. In that passage, it's interesting, he put that passage in. But what struck me even more was the part just after that, when he talked about, that advice was really important, but it wasn't the words of wisdom he was hoping for. And the struggle to fit in in school was a real, real problem for him. It also spoke me, just when listening to what Raymond said, it took me back to working with some black students when I was a counselor at Davis a few years ago and working with students to, I'm embarrassed that there were counselors that would limit people based on their race or their experience so far. Because it just makes me sad that members of my own profession put people in a box. But I remember working with some black students who had some really open conversations with me about when I was working with them around the idea of pursuing college and pursuing IB programs or honors programs. And one of the things that they faced among their peers sometimes, and we had conversations about this, is when they did step out to really push themselves academically, they would hear from their peers of, what are you trying to do? Be white, rather than, are you trying to be your best self? And that really saddened me, that some kid's peer group would hold them back sometimes, at least temporarily. Now, some of those kids went on, and I know of one that's a medical doctor now and one that's a college professor with a PhD. So they didn't listen totally to their peers. They listened to their hearts and went for what they wanted. But it's just sad that they had to have those conversations with peers sometimes.
Graciela, you get the last word on that?
Sure, and I'll just clarify. My comment wasn't so much specific to education, but more of the concept that you have to do more, try harder, work harder to accomplish the same level of success as a white person. And so it's something that's always out there, and I see all the time. And it's interesting to experience.
Definitely had that messaging as a child myself, where grandparents and parents were like, if you want to be on the same level as the white kid, you're going to have to be 10 times better than that white kid. And, but the nice thing about it was, there was also that encouraging message underneath, like it was never a doubt that you could do that if you worked hard enough to do it. So it's a challenging thing. I want to reiterate for anyone joining us late, we do these 3:30 sessions with the school board where we are engaged in conversation that's really focused on the subject of race, which is a part of our larger lens of how do we advance equity, educational, and racial justice in the Akamaw School District. So we have been doing this series of conversations that are really focused on race. And I also want to just say, I really appreciate the board members for the vulnerability that you show in engaging in these conversations. This is a hard conversation to have anytime. But then to have it, you know, at work, streamlined to the community that votes for you and all of those sorts of things, it takes a lot for you to do that. And I really appreciate the commitment that you made to this. And I'm not making it easy for you with some of the questions that I'm going to be asking. So thank you. Moving ahead, we're jumping into chapter seven, and I pulled out this quote on page 119. He says, "By normalizing social construction of knowledge and thus engaging multiple racial points of view, participants in courageous conversations surface critical perspectives that open the door to new ways of looking at the challenge of effectively educating all students." And so we want to just make sure that we have a good idea about what he means by this. And so I have a few, I guess it can go to any board member. What's he trying to say here? What do you think he means by that word, normalize?
I think it's like making it routine, but also just maybe adding value to something that everybody agrees on, that is of value to our community, our society, and that everybody will engage in or practice or make routine.
Thank you.
I agree with what Raymond said, it's about the values of it and to be equitable across the board, to be consistent. It means, you know, to have consistency in the construction of normalizing education for every student.
Thank you. Norm, Graciela, or Martha, you guys got a thought about this?
Well, it seems to me that it's saying that we need to make it part of daily practice in all of our work around working with students in education is that we need to continually be aware of multiple points of view and in making decisions. And we need to access those multiple points of view and that knowledge doesn't come from one expert or one person, but that it comes from utilizing the collective wisdom of all those points of view.
And I'll just add, I think that quote is saying that if whoever the decision-makers are, think about or are aware of the different perspectives and how race impacts any decision, whether it's a small decision or a big decision, or an event, or a document, or really anything, race can, and you look at whatever that it is through this perspective of multiple perspectives, I think will make a better decision for all of our students.
I think I would agree with Norm, that just make it a part of every day so that it doesn't, it doesn't have to be, or it shouldn't be something that you have to consciously think about.
So my question, Dr. Pipton, is that, you know, even on the board, we have different experiences with race and racism, and we have different responses, thus creating, you know, those different, I guess, construction of knowledge individually. So I know they're all important, right? All our perspectives are important. But how do we come to an agreement, right, that what's the best thing? What's the moral thing to do in terms of providing an education to kids?
Yeah, and I think that's always the question that's looming there. And I think that we also, it takes a lot of work to remind ourselves that we are not the representative of the race that we are. So we have a point of view that is influenced by our experiences, and our race is definitely a part of that. But even within the same race, you're going to have a diversity of viewpoints on any issue too. And so that is always the challenge is, well, how do we arrive at the right thing to do when we have so many different perspectives? What I would say is that when we're looking at that word and we're saying normalize, you know, it is just to recognize that that is the way that it is, is that our perspectives are shaped socially constructed and that how our racial identity is a part of the shaping of that and how we experience it. And so when we are coming to a point of making a decision, as several of you said, we have to make sure that we're engaging multiple points of view and that race has been thoroughly considered as a part of that. And that last part there of critical perspective is, we have to be looking for, when is it missing? When has it not been a part of this conversation? Like, we're on the verge of making a decision about X. Have we tapped multiple racial points of view in coming to that? Or is there a perspective that we may still be missing and have not considered and addressed? And then when it gets time and you have all of that at the table, you have to make your decision and you make sure that you have thoroughly considered all the perspectives that have come and that you are speaking to them. So if the decision doesn't go my way, at least you can talk to me about how you considered my point of view, how my point of view impacted you. And that is sometimes the best that you can do. I'm really blessed to work in the Akamaw School District right now. I have a good relationship with Superintendent Green. When I don't agree with something, I can tell him that to his face. I can say, this is why, blah, blah, blah. And all I'm expecting is for him to take the time to think about it and be able to come back to me and tell me, okay, I really considered your point of view. This is my thinking around that. At the end of the day, this is the decision that I feel like I have to make, and this is why. And hopefully, for our community, they will understand that that's the best that you can get sometimes. Because you cannot always make a decision that's going to satisfy everyone. But you can be aware of and consider their perspectives. And when those perspectives are heavily influenced by race, we definitely need to take the time to do that so that we can keep trust with the communities that we serve. And be explicit about how, you know, with the article that I gave you all, there's a reason why black folks don't trust school districts and health officials who say to do X and Y. There's a history to that. So if you don't speak to that history and say, okay, I know that these communities have been impacted in these ways when officials make these sorts of decisions, then yeah, of course, there is going to be distrust because you're not acknowledging the basic stuff that we already know. So I think all of that kind of goes in there. I can't, I don't think that really answers your question, Raymond, but that's how I'm thinking about the ways that decision-makers put all of these things together. So we've got about 20 minutes left here. I want to push, maybe I'll come back to this. I want to go to the data. I don't know if you saw the data slides that were linked. If you did, I'm wondering, you can respond to any one of these four questions. So was there something in the data that confirmed something you already suspected? Was there anything that surprised you? Is there a question that you would ask to the folks that produce those data slides? And what, or what would be lost if we took a colorblind approach to our data? I'll start with Martha, because I'm pretty sure she did the homework. Uh-oh, she just went screen off.
Hit the wrong button, sorry. I think if we took, I think if we take a colorblind approach to reviewing data, we run the risk of not meeting the needs of some of our students. I think there's a real risk of kids falling through a crack and not, not performing, not learning to the best that they can learn.
Don, any one of these questions?
Well, I'd have to look at the data again. But when I was looking through it, I think one of the things that surprised me was there was an area, I think it maybe had to do with attendance, where I was surprised that actually the attendance of our black students was better than some, on average, than some other students, some other groups as a group. But it didn't translate into academic success yet in terms of testing and those kinds of things. But it kind of surprised me. I thought attendance might be an issue, but that wasn't an issue there.
Don, I don't think, we say Don.
Well, thank you, Norm, for answering for Don.
Oh, I thought you said Norm. Oh, I thought you said norm.
It's okay, because that's, you know, even I have to go back and look. And I was looking at that same piece that Norm was talking about, if the attendance of black students, how good it is. But we still not seeing that, that light click on or, or how it's being translated into the academic side. And, you know, it's, you know, and to be colorblind, that's something that, that's hard to, to do when, when you, when, when, if you take that colorblind approach to data. Because what you're doing is you, you're not dealing with the whole piece of the puzzle. It's, it's, it's about every, it's about being inclusive to everybody, looking at every aspect of it. Colorblind to me, that's an escape route. And, and from my experiences as, as working with school districts and working and advocating is, you know, they always use the black race to, to get what they need. And then, when it comes to providing the service, we are the last to get it. And, and that's that colorblind piece to me. Whenever colorblind is mentioned to me, that's what pops up. The minorities, they, they are used to get the funding and everything else. But when it comes down to it, we are the last to receive everything.
Graciela?
I think we've seen a lot, a lot of this data over, over the years and in, in different forms. I think what, what, what I always come back to, in particular, looking around the metrics for Native American kids and black kids is what the, the end factor is. Because we see such variance there, you know, looking at, at the charts, you know, it's very clear that black kids and Native American kids are more adversely impacted by, you know, the, whether disciplinary policies, things like that. But the, the number of, of students that fall into those categories is so small, you know, is the, I, I guess I, I, I always think about the end factor because it, it could be, you know, a difference of, of one student in a year, and that certainly doesn't, you know, negate our, our need to look at that data. But I think it's, it's interesting to keep in mind the number of, of students in each of those categories. Because the averages that you look at then are, you, you put those into context a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's a really good point. Raymond?
Yes, I'm surprised, to be frankly, that our African-American students continue to comprise only 55%, 0.5% of the student population, yet have the highest expulsion rates. Even after, even, even after our, about three years ago, we had the Office of Civil Rights come in and tell us that we were doing that. So, it continues. But also, the other thing, I'm kind of surprised that, and trying, I'm wondering what's going on, is that the Hispanic students have the highest graduation rate, yet they have the lowest percentage of students, Hispanic students that are prepared for kindergarten. So, I, I just kind of wondering what, what are we doing? We're doing something right there with those kindergarteners, because 80, they have the highest percent, at 83% for your graduation rate.
Yeah. A couple of points I want to make before I move off of this slide and really having to deal with, one is the, that colorblind approach, is that this hopefully raises questions for us when we disaggregate our data. I don't remember who said it to me, but something that stuck with me over the years is this phrase that aggregated data covers a multitude of sins. Like, there can be a lot of bad things going on, and when you don't unpack the numbers, you're like, well, we don't have that many kids who are getting suspended or disciplined overall. But if you unpack it and you see that those are being isolated among certain racial groups and that when those students are suspended, they are excluded for much longer periods of time, then that's a problem that you wouldn't see if you didn't ask the questions around race. And race is definitely not the only way that we should disaggregate data, but it is a way that we definitely need to be disaggregating data so that we have those questions. One of the things that surprised me was in the arts. I was like, actual participation across the board in the arts, I don't know if I included it on what I sent you, but when I looked at that slide, was equitable that students were participating in arts programming in Yakima School District, pretty close to in the same proportions that they're represented in the school district. So, the arts teachers, the programmer, the people who are putting the schedules together are doing a really great job of making sure that students have equal access to that particular opportunity. But that's not something that I would have guessed. And so, me looking and being able to see that gives me also things that I can celebrate in the data. The other thing I want to push is there is a natural tendency to look at the performance of our white students in any area and to say that if you're doing as well or better than the white students, then you're doing good. And so, and that's a really, and no offense to white people, but that's a really low bar to hold people of color to, is to say do as well as white people. That's not the bar, right? So, when I look at that attendance data and I see that our white students were actually the second lowest group in attendance data, they were higher than native students, but they were lower than our African-American students, lower than our Latino students. It doesn't mean that the attendance numbers are now okay because the other groups are performing, are attending more regularly than the white students. All of them need to be attending more regularly than they are because those numbers were in like 70%-ish area. But it will suggest to me that when we say the reason students are underperforming on assessments is because of attendance, that that may not be the case where attendance is the problem that's contributing to these other performance areas. Because we have white students who may be performing higher than some of these as a group, but they're not attending as much, if that, if that makes sense. So, I want to keep that in mind, because that's one of the things that happens in these conversations all the time, is that we always go, well, if you're doing close to as well as the white kids are, then it's all of a sudden fine. And really, no, we want all of the kids on the highest levels possible. And we're looking at gaps and disparity so that we can figure out where to concentrate our energy. But it doesn't make it because you're performing like the white student, you're suddenly, you're okay.
Dr. Pippleton, can I interrupt for, because there's something that's been on my mind here. Because we, the board, and we, I think that we have a differing views of what colorblindness means. And so, I think that what, what most of us are thinking is that it's, it's colorblind in the literal sense, right? You don't see the outer appearance, the color pigmentation of a person's skin, right? And there's another, there's another definition. So, I like to get, you know, what define that term? I, I see colored blindness as more of a moral principle in that we see a race, we see color of the skin, we see everything, we see what, how tall you are, how short, we see the color of your skin. I, I think I said that, male, female. But we move beyond that and we don't, we don't allow ourselves to treat that person or mistreat that person based on this color of their skin. So, I, I tend to believe more that way. And I know there's exemplars in the field who are African-American, Latino, also subscribe to that definition. So, when we use colorblindness, I'm kind of, kind of, I'm kind of struggling there. I'm kind of, I'm, I'm defining or applying that definition to my, my worldview.
Yeah, there was a word in there in what you said, and it was, the word was mistreat. And I think that that is, in that sense, when you're saying if color is causing me to mistreat someone based on their color, then color, then that's, that's a problem, right? But there are things that by knowing a person's color and cultural experience, their background, their perspective, there are things that you can do to better serve them because you have that information and it informs the choices that you make. So, when we're talking, when we're, and the article that we're going to go to next, we only have 10 minutes on it, but when you're talking about perceptions about school reopening plans, right? If I know the history of the harm that government has done to African-American, to black people in the past, testing vaccines on black people, leaving black people out of key decisions, these sorts of things, if I am aware of that history, then when I see and I apply my knowledge of that history to my conversation with you, to my outreach to black families, when I apply that knowledge, then I can build trust with them. I can actually make a more informed decision. I can address concerns that they have. Whereas if I just say, I'm not going to look at it, I'm just going to poll the community and say, what do you think about this? And regardless of race, the poll is just out there. I may come out and say, the insides, like Graciela was saying, it's so small for our black families. The insides is so small. If I just do a poll survey like that, I'm going to make a decision that totally disregards a whole community of folks who are talking about this every day in homes, talking about this every day in their churches, talking about this every day in their communities. And they have a certain shared perspective that the school district doesn't care about them at all or how they're feeling or what's happened to them historically. So, that is the difference between I see your color and because I see it, I'm going to engage you with the knowledge that I have about how you have been impacted by decisions in the past, about the best ways to actually connect and communicate. I'm using that to serve you better, not to mistreat you. And that is the fundamental difference. There's a thought that if I.
That's colorblindness to me, which you just said.
Well, no, because if you're colorblind, then you don't, you don't recognize that you have a point of view that's shared by a group in your community. Like, you couldn't even get an article, you couldn't get this article because you wouldn't even have disaggregated the data to find out that our black families have a different perspective than our white families about this because you're not looking for it. So, when I, when I say colorblindness, I mean, you don't see the distinction at all. You don't ask the question. You don't group your data that way, you don't break your data out that way, you just try not to see it at all.
But I, but I see colorblindness as I see your color, but it's not going to get in the way of me treating you a certain way or not. So, I'm just saying, and I'll just say this, that, you know, you know, Martin Luther King said, you know, don't judge my children, right, by the, the color of the skin, but by the content of the character. So, that's where I'm headed, that's where I'm thinking. That's kind of the frame of reference or mind that I have, that one day we could be a colorblind society where you look at somebody and you, you're not going to hold that against them, their color against them. So, but anyways, we're running out of time, I just wanted.
I think you're, I think you're, that you're right there. The issue is, like I said, I have to, if I can't see color and I can't see the experiences that you're having as a basis of your color, I can't see racism. If I can't see, if I can't see race, I can't see racism. If I can't see racism, I can't do anything about it. And so, that whole idea of not seeing is the part that we're talking about when I use that word colorblind. Don't treat me poorly because of my color, that's not what I'm saying. Don't treat me, you might have to treat me differently because of my color. You might have to speak directly to me. If a teacher had asked me in the third grade, do you think you should sit down now? Then I'm going to say to that teacher, no, I don't, right? Because adults talking to me tell me what they want me to do. They don't ask me, do I think I should do what they want me to do? So, I may need to be spoken to more directly because that's the culture that I'm in. But if you can't see it, then you say, I asked him to sit down and he was defiant. And he's like, no, you did not ask me to sit down. You asked me, did I think I should sit down? You asked me, should I sit down? You asked me in some white way that means sit down, but I'm not white. And so, I don't hear it the same way that you intended it when you said it, right? And so, I have to see color to be an effective instructor for my kids. I spoke to my kids direct because I knew if I speak direct, they know what I'm saying. Whereas if I ask, Johnny, shouldn't you, do you, how do you, do you want to go up and answer the question on the board? No, I don't. Well, that makes an uncomfortable moment for the teacher when the teacher was really trying to say, get your butt up and go answer the question on the board. So, the, those are just some examples of how awareness of race, the way that people talk to their kids, the way that people have experiences interacting with government, those all play a part. And so, we don't want to treat you poorly on account of your color, but we definitely should see it and understand that different folks are socialized in different ways. And I think this is, I'm going to go ahead and stop and not go into this article, but I think that from our discussion so far, you can see where I was going to be going with this article, that it's really about recognizing that we have communities that have very different perspectives, that we need to be intentional about outreach to all of our communities and hearing, hearing from them and responding to the concerns that they have. So, I really appreciate this. Any last thoughts from any of you with the three to four minutes that we have left?
I, I think this was a great session and we're, we're getting closer. It's going to be some work and we're going to understand one another and respect one another's opinion and reflection of how they view this, this piece. I'm glad about it. I, I see we, I see us growing as a board more closely in having this conversation, this greatest conversation.
It makes me nervous when it gets quiet at the end, but you know, I don't know. Maybe we're just in the, we're just wrestling with it. So, I thank you, appreciate you guys for the dialogue and for letting me be a part of this work that you're doing.
I do want to apologize for getting us off track on a little bunny trail, but it's just something that, you know, I, I tend to get into that, that upper right-hand quadrant and begin to know more of the thinking type of thing. So, I'm trying to get down towards the, the moral and the feeling part, but for some reason, I get shot up to that right-hand corner, so.
You're not off track. That, that question, the whole book is about that question that you asked, is trying to make the case about that, that issue. So, that's right at the crux of what this whole book is about.
Yeah, okay.
Going straight to the.
Thank you.
Right, Raymond, it's, it's not off track. We, we all going to the same spot together. Smile, man.
Thank you all. This was a great study session. I expect that we will continue to have these really deep conversations and help each one of us build, build ourselves into that compass a little bit more. So, we're going to take a break until 4:30 and come back and have the, commence our meeting at 4:30. We have, I think, I hope I'm saying this right, Belen Garcia Gutierrez, a sixth grader at Franklin, who is going to lead us in the pledge at 4:30. So, take a little break, get a little refreshment, not the adult kind, but maybe some water. And I'll see you in a few minutes. Thank you all for being here. I'm going to call to order the February 8th meeting of the Yakima School District Board of Directors. Is Principal Anderson here?
Yes, I am, Martha.
Thank you for being here and thank you to, is it Belen? Is that how you say your name? I mispronounced it earlier. Fortunately, you weren't here to hear that. Mrs. Anderson, could you please introduce your student and then we will move into the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure, thank you. So, Belen represents one of those students, she is a sixth grader at our school. We have never met. Belen has never been in my building. So, but, but what we do see of her, we wish we had 300 more. So, I want you to know that you're looking at a student that has no absences in a year of total uncertainty. She's carrying a straight A in her classes and absolutely no missing assignments. And we really appreciate all the hard work she's done from the remote world. So, at this time, Belen, I'm going to turn it over. And I have heard, this is the second time she has done this, so she continues to shine. So, I turn it over to you, Belen. So I turn it over to you, Belen. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Belen. That was very good. That was very nice. Thank you for, for leading us today. Where did she go? Belen, are you still here? Okay. My, I have a little screen, so I can't see everyone. Tell us a little bit about yourself. You're a sixth grader, right?
Yeah.
And you haven't, you haven't had a chance to be in Franklin yet, huh?
No.
Pretty soon. Pretty soon, we're going to keep our fingers crossed. What, what are you, what are you liking most about online remote school?
My teachers.
Yeah?
Yeah.
It'll be nice to meet with them, won't it? In person? Yeah. Well, I, I very much appreciated having you here today. I'm going to let the rest of the board say a few words to you. And then after that, if you want, you're more than welcome to stay. You want to tell us about your teachers, who they are?
Oh, yeah. Okay, I have Ms. Mendoza for life science. I have Mr. Archer. I have Ms. Payne. Ms. For math, I have Ms. Gutierrez. I have Ms. Royce and I have Ms. Patillo.
Excellent. Excellent. And you get to see all of them on a regular basis, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's kind, it's, it's kind of interesting. You get to know more about them through this mechanism, I think, than maybe you would if you were in class, in-person class. Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah, a little bit because we get to know a little more about them than just seeing them.
Board members, do you have anything that you'd like to ask or add?
Belen, thank you for coming and graced us with the Pledge of Allegiance today and to hear that you are a straight A student. And I know whatever you put your mind and heart to, you will achieve it. And thank you for serving as ASB representative to your school and to the students. And continue up, continue the great work, even though you're online. I know you're going to do even greater once we get everything back in person. Thank you for all your hard work and never let no one tell you, you can't achieve greatness because you can't.
Thank you.
Hi Belen, I just wanted to thank you too for joining us today and congratulate you on being an excellent student. And also I have fond memories of Franklin as I was a student at Franklin many, 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 many years ago. And I was a counselor at Franklin a few years after that. So I've been at Franklin twice and it's one of my favorite places in the world. So I'm glad that, I hope you get to walk the halls there pretty soon. So good luck on your future.
Thank you.
Belen, this is Raymond. Also wanted to say thank you for joining us this evening or this afternoon. I'm very impressed with your grades. Keep up the good work. And I want to tell you something kind of corny, right? Is your GPA is your GPS and they'll take you as far as, as Dr., or as Reverend Davis said, as far as you want to go, your grades will take you there. That's like your GPS. I see you as like a star athlete. Went to get to high school, was straight A. You're going to be highly recruited by top universities in the United States because you'll be a star scholar. So just congratulations and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Hi, hi Belen, my name is Graciela. Thank you for being here today. What's, what, what is one thing that you're looking forward to returning to the school building?
Seeing a lot of students that I haven't seen on camera.
Is, is there anything that, that you're worried about returning to school?
Not getting to my classes on time.
Yeah, that can be hard. I remember having to run between classes sometimes because the classes run other sides of the building. Very good. Well, thank you for being here and congratulations on your good grades and your ASB position.
Thank you.
Belen, thank you again for being here. Your dog barking in the background reminds me of my security team, which fortunately has not heard your dog bark. Otherwise they would be all up in the, my business here trying to bark at your dog. So thank you for being here. You're welcome to stay if you'd like to, but I understand that you may have homework or dinner or something that you have to get to. So thanks again for being here.
Thank you for having me.
You're, you're a delight. You're an absolute delight. Okay, we're going to move on with the rest of our agenda. Jennifer, could you call the role, please?
Sure. Donald Davis Jr.
Here.
Graciela Villanueva.
Here.
Martha Rice.
Here.
Raymond Navarro Jr.
Here.
Norm Walker.
I am here.
Thank you.
I do want to remind folks that we are still under proclamation 20 dash 28 of the, from the governor's office. Back on January 15th, the Senate passed a resolution. See if I can find the number. I can't find the number right off my bat, right off the bat. Oh, 8402. And that resolution identifies that we are under the rule of proclamation 20 dash 28. And as long as the state is in, in a declared state of emergency, which we are because of the pandemic. And so because of that, we are still meeting remotely. Folks who are listening in or are with us today are welcome to submit any comments either through email or postal mail. Unfortunately, we won't be taking any live comments in these remote settings. So we're going to move to the rest of our agenda. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent update. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Rice, members of the board. Very thankful to be here with you today. You may notice a change on our agenda. We have now separated a superintendent update from the superintendent COVID-19 update in an effort to make sure that things are falling under the right category and provide clarity as we move forward. I want to thank also the 22 of us, 21 people for being here live in session and for the nine people that are observing right now. We're grateful for the community members that take an interest in what is happening around our district and certainly grateful for you as board members for really setting the tone and direction for us to follow. So thank you for that and thank you for your continued support. For the superintendent update today, I'm excited to share that we have now re-entered a phase that brought in multiple students in an area of, not this one yet, Jennifer, you're, we, 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 we made the change. So we're actually starting with, uh, sharing some information about the roll-in of tutoring at our schools. And it would be probably inappropriate for me to give you a description of what happened in our schools when we have so many wonderful people, boots on the grounds, our principals are doing a fantastic job. We had five of them at one point here tonight. We still have at least three that I see with us currently. And I have asked a couple of principals to share what they noticed coming in today to the schools because we had, you know, more kids coming in. And I did receive some notification from Aaron Thomas and Amanda Voorhees. So I have asked them both respectively to share their impression and answer any questions that the board may have about re-entering from their perspective. So we'll go ahead and start with Aaron Thomas from Nob Hill. Principal Thomas?
Thank you. I do have a couple of pictures I'd like to show. So as you know, today we brought back a few groups for tutoring and I was just really impressed with all of the positive feeling that was going on around this and the number of staff and people that reached out to me with their positive impressions. So I just wanted to share that I, I reached out to Superintendent Green and to Dr. Darling and just shared a photo or two. And I just wanted to share that with you today. So I did not get a picture of this, but just so you know what this represents. One of our first students that showed up for today with his mom to be checked in and screened, he was jumping up and down and he was jumping up and down like he was on a trampoline because he was so excited to be here. And one of our staff members said, are you excited? And he said, yes. And so it was really great to hear that feedback from that student. And then another staff member said, I looked out and I saw the students coming in with their little laptop bags and they looked like executives returning to work. And it was great to hear that and they were so excited. And then I went into one of the tutoring groups where the kids were working. I was trying to sneak around the corner and take a photo of them as they were working. And as I did that, you can tell that the kids are looking up at me at that point. But as I did, the, this little girl right here jumped out of her seat and she threw up her arms and she said, Mrs. Thomas. And she was so happy to see me and it just really touched my heart that she was so happy to see me and that the kids were waving and I could see their smiles behind their masks. And then another group, we had another group this afternoon and I got a quick pic of them and they were so excited to be here. And then as they walked out for their screen break for a little bit of recess halfway through, I saw them practicing their social distancing. And so they had their arms out and I was teasing them. I was telling them I was going to take a photo of them and put it on TikTok and say it's the Nighthawk Dance. But anyway, those are the, the impressions. And then I heard from my office, a staff member say, there's kids in the building. And it was such a joyful sound to hear that. And so that's why I, I reached out just because it has been such a positive thing and it made me think about how all the time that we have spent in preparation for this, it was worth every minute.
Thank you, Principal Thomas. Please do stay with us for a few moments. And now I would like to pass this over to Amanda Voorhees from McKinley. Principal Voorhees.
Thanks for inviting me to come and share a little bit with you guys this evening. I have a couple of pictures also that I will hopefully figure out how to share. Can, I don't have my double screen. So can you guys, can somebody say if they're seeing the pictures or not?
Yes.
Okay, great. So McKinley had about 18 students this morning and we had 20 students in the afternoon. And we're doing all of our tutoring in the gymnasium, in the lunchroom so that we can kind of maximize the space and make sure that we're spread out. So here's a picture of our morning group that came in and you can see the paraeducators that are helping the students. Again, some of the same things that Aaron was saying, kids are so excited, jumping up and down, saying, yes, I'm so excited to be back. And one little girl at the end, I was walking her out to her, to meet her dad in her car. And I said, so did you get lots of work today? She's like, I can't believe how much work I got done today. So, which is one of the things that we really want to help students focus. And she was just ecstatic about how much work she, she got done and accomplished. So that is my first picture. Here's another picture of kiddos in our gym, working with some paraeducators. So this little girl right here, she is doing her, you can see at the corner of her screen, that's Mr. O. He is created an asynchronous PE lesson. So there's stuff that they're talking about heart health this month. And so she's going through that lesson. This kiddo is learning from our counselor. I think he is like learning like breathing techniques for calming down. So he was finishing that lesson. And then Mr. Fisher, of course, he's kind of famous with the asynchronous videos, but this student is doing the music lesson from Mr. Fisher. So that, let's see if I can stop sharing now. So that is all of the pictures that I took. I'm going to try to keep talking while I'm figuring out how to stop. One of the things that I was so impressed with was just how well all of the systems that have been put into place, how well those systems went. And it's at the building level, but it's not only at the building level. I mean, Stacy Locke and her team have really created amazing systems that we can then, you know, roll out at the building level. So everything went so smoothly. Our dots were on the ground, people were staying apart. The, the little scanner for taking your temperature when you walk in the building, the attestation cards. I mean, it all was like, wow, went off without a hitch. So it was, it was really exciting to have the kids back. It's what we've all been looking forward to and it made my heart really happy today, so.
Fantastic. Do you have any questions, President Rice or other members of the board?
Any questions or comments from the board?
I just have a comment for both Amanda and Aaron. Thank you for sharing your day with the tutoring students and to see the joy, not only from the students, but also from the staff in wanting the kids to come back. And Aaron, on Thursday, I had the opportunity to be the first responder, who was a kindergartner in 1969 and at Nob Hill. And he said to tell the people at Nob Hill, thank you for the love and care. And now he's a firefighter, but I want to thank you guys for all the work that you're doing. And I know this is gonna, this is easing my mind on some things that, decisions that we have to make and knowing that we can do this if we do it safe and with the right piece, pieces of puzzle in place. And I want to thank Stacy for doing all, all that she's doing to make sure that we do this in a, in a safe manner. Thank you guys.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
I have a question. When, first I'll have a comment. I thank you for sharing a little bit about the days at each of your school and for sharing the pictures. I always really enjoy seeing the kiddos in action, so to speak. So thank you for that. I do have a question about attendance. You, you share some of the numbers of the number of students that, that attended. What, what was overall attendance like? Did all the kids show up? Half the kids show, show up? What did that look like?
The majority of the kids at McKinley showed up. I was really surprised when we started reaching out to parents. I think we, because we had to take 5% of our student population, we could only have 88 kids come back. I think that we ended up talking to 92, 92 families or 90, yeah, 92 families. And of those families, 86 are coming. They signed up and only 10 needed transportation. Everybody else, the parents were like, I'll bring them there. So they were excited to have their kids come and it was, it, you know, it was just really neat to see the parents support their child that way by saying, no, I'll make sure that we bring our kids there. And I think we only had three kiddos that didn't make it today. At least in the morning group, three kiddos that didn't make it today. And I think they missed the bus. So they'll be here tomorrow.
We actually had two of our homeless students who did not show up today and we were notified later on in the day that they transferred to Sunnyside. So those were the two that were missing from Nob Hill today.
Any other questions or comments? Aaron and, Aaron and Amanda, I want to thank you for brightening our day. It was, it was wonderful to hear how excited everyone is to, for the students to be there, for the staff to have the students there. I'm looking forward to hearing more of these stories from the other schools and moving to a place where we have more of your students incorporated in. into your day-to-day lives again, in person. So thank you so much for being here and for sharing.
Likewise, I want to thank both Amanda and Erin. Thank you so much, and appreciate you reaching out and not only brightening the day of our board members, but when we receive that information from you, the photos, the updates, as cabinet members, that's something that inspires us as well. So we consider ourselves fortunate to be able to support you and what you do. And thank you for not forgetting us and connecting us with your kids. And we're looking very forward, you know, we're looking forward to the time where we can come back and drop in, and we know that that's right around the corner for us. So thank you so much. I appreciate your time for being here. Stay as long as you want, and we totally understand if you need to do other things. So thanks. Would you like me to continue, Martha, with the COVID update?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. You and I will work on those transitions in between these two sessions now, so it goes a little bit more seamless next time. So that brings us to the COVID-19 update. We are, we do have with us two of our COVID response team members. We talked about granting a title for all of the work that Jewel's been doing for us. So she is our COVID Response Team Data Expert. And then she'll be followed by Stacy Locke, who is leading our COVID Response Team. And we have Jessica Post with us as well in the wings, listening in. Just a reminder that Jessica sometimes does drop off later in the evenings as she is on quote-unquote Texas time, a couple hours ahead of us, and has some kiddos at home. So she does take those evenings, but does drop in early when she can. So we're going to start with Jewel, go to Stacy, and then I'll go ahead and wrap up the COVID-19 report. Jewel, please.
Hi. Can I say that Davis students were excited also? River speakers was there, and when we were checking in students, but when they were leaving, that's when they really showed the excitement because we were giving, you know, snacks and a bag of supplies. But we said, you know, thanks for coming. And they were like, oh, it's so good to be back. So they don't, you know, jump up and down like the little kids, but the Davis students had a good time today, too. All right, so COVID, the Health District has dropped in some numbers in a backlog, cases of rapid response cases, that the ones that get mailed in. And so this week, we went a little bit up. But actually, if you look at the numbers of what they reported for the day's entry and then the backlog, if you don't add those together, we're still dropping, and we're still dropping. So that's good. Go ahead, Jennifer. So if you see the big spike there is entry of the rapid response kits that were added in, and then we're still going on a downward trend, though. So cases per 100,000, we took a little bump up because of those rapid response kits. So we're up 594 per 100,000 instead of 567. We were actually, one day last week, down to 530, but then they added in the other cases, so. This is for the region. Yakimaug in 594. The highest there is Franklin County. Benton County's dropped quite a bit. And then Columbia County went up a lot. But what's funny about that is they only have 19 cases. But for them, that's a big bump in their population. They had two before. ZIP Code data, they only update this on Wednesdays or Thursday mornings. And so the last one we have is February 1st, but you notice it's scaling down in all the ZIP Code areas. Hospitalizations hit the low of 24, went up to 27, and is back down to 25 now. So that's still looking good. Hospitalizations across the region, Benton County hasn't changed because their site is down. It's been down for four days, so I can't get that new data. Walla Walla went up in cases, and we've stayed at 24, 25, I mean. Percentage of test positivity, we dropped from 21.7 to 21. So it's going down a little, but it's pretty slow. That's the, that's the rate that's gonna be the fourth one, you know, out of the four, the regional. That'll be the hardest to get under 10%, but. And so in the region, we're at 22% overall. But as you can see, no one is really above that 22% except Columbia County, which, because they had 19 cases out of 3,000 students, or 3,000 people. But overall, the rates are dropping. I went back and redid the regression statistics with the new week's data, and we're still on the same course. The small bump of the extra cases wasn't enough to change that downward horse that goes out through the end of March, so. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Jewel, I appreciate these numbers. I've told you that every week, but I think it bears repeating that every time we hear these numbers, and especially when they're going down, it's always, it always kind of gives me a little warm feeling to know that maybe we're, I don't want to say it too loud, because who knows? The COVID gods may strike me down. But, you know, maybe, maybe we're seeing some results from people who are being more careful. And all of those, all of those acts of caution are going to make, mean that our kids are going to be able to get back into school all that much sooner. So thank you for providing us with this every time. It really is very helpful.
You're welcome. I'm going to have fun doing the predictions, so. It's a lot of fun math.
Thank you, Jewel. Again, we appreciate all of the time and effort you put into this, and really gratifying to see that you are projecting out what our cases could be and when they descend as well. So thank you. We'll pass this now to Stacy, and then I'll follow up.
Thank you, Superintendent Green. Good evening, Board of Directors. Thank you, Reverend Davis, for the accolades, but I couldn't do it without my entire team. And we have Executive Director Amanda Jewell here tonight, who is part of the COVID Response Team, in addition to Jessica Post, who's our Chief Strategy Officer, myself, Jackie Follinsby, and Lani Kate, as well as 24 of our Health Service employees that have been on the ground and instrumental in all the work that's gone on. We had an opportunity today to meet with the Health Department team, school team, for a good hour. And we're all walking alongside each other, moving forward, and supporting each other where support is needed. So tonight, I'd like to share with you just a few statistics. For the week of February 1 through 7, we had 19 investigations that took place. Two were positive. They were staff-only, no students. And we did 40 COVID tests this week throughout our district. That brings us for, from January 1st to the 7th, with 99 investigations, 37 confirmed positive. We've also administered 301 tests with five positive, five insufficient, and 291 negative tests. My only concern was today, for Monday only, we had eight investigations and one positive test. So I'm hoping that slows down this week and kind of stays with what we've been doing. We've been right around 23 to 19 investigations a week. So I'm hoping to see that decrease as we continue to move forward, even though we'll be rolling students back in. Additionally, I know what's been really important is where are we at with our school district and vaccinations? I shared a while back that we had turned a plan into the Office of Emergency Management. And Amanda Jewell tonight is going to share with you what the COVID vaccination plan looks like for the Yakima School District and exactly where we are in that process. So I'm going to turn it over to Amanda. Amanda, welcome, and please share.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to present my screen to you. Just a second. Okay, can everybody see that? I can't see you, so if you could let me know by somebody saying yes?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So here's our Vaccine Administration Progress Update as of today. And so we have some completed items, and then I'm going to go through what we've done already, what's in progress, and what we have left before we would be able to launch vaccine clinics for our staff and community. So completed items, like we talked, like Stacy talked about. We have the Vaccination Provider Enrollment. That was the plan we put forth to Emergency Management. That was completed. We have our Point of Contact and Staff Capacity identified. And we have physician orders in place. That was actually done at the state level. And we have our vaccination supplies and materials identified and ready to order. So the items that we have in progress or not yet started is a provider partnership for the actual administration of vaccines and safety monitoring. So who's going to be with us when we do administer to make sure that if there's anybody that has a reaction or needs additional help, that they're in the wings waiting for us. In progress is also the allocation, ordering, distribution, and inventory management plan, which is also a part of the state requirement. And once we get steps one through six completed, and our plan is approved, then we're ready to move on to the next two phases. So, which is training of staff around the actual administration of vaccines and the state-required data system, which has some documentation appointments and reporting components, security and safety monitoring support. Again, that was an item that is in progress. And then, once the vaccinations arrive, a confirmation of dates, times, distributing appointment management systems, information, and then the actual beginning of administration of vaccines. So you can see that we are, we are on our way, but we have some big steps left to complete before we are to that point. So any questions on our rollout?
Any questions from the board? Amanda, do you anticipate that you and the team will have difficulty accessing the vaccine as other places around the state are doing?
I would anticipate that being a hurdle as well. So that's why we want to be prepared, just in case that hurdle is removed. We want to be ready and ready to go when it comes our way, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Amanda. Stacy, did you have any other follow-up?
No, thank you, Amanda.
All right. Wonderful. I just wanted to make an additional comment that I think the board remembers that last week I did share that I reached out to Chris Reichdahl and did let him know that we would be willing, as a district, to be a site, to use our facilities for vaccine distribution. That offer still does hold, and it's just really dependent upon the pipeline, the supply line getting to us and providing that opportunity. And that is certainly something that is not within our control. So that is something I'd want the community to know, that we have placed all of the protocols in that we can. You have continuously, as a board, maintained a strong understanding of where we're at, which is greatly appreciated. And I recognize that during this uncertain time, we do have outreach happening from many of our parents and even a few students because there is fear. There's fear of the unknown, and we understand that. And we recognize that this is a challenging time for families, for our community, and for our country. At the same time, we also recognize that we saw, when we went to distance learning, the alternate perspective, and have continued to see that alternate perspective throughout the past year of people who thought we should be in session. So this is truly a case of being in between a rock and a hard place with our stakeholders. I recognize that and completely understand where people are coming from. And I would just like to remind any people that are out there observing tonight that I myself, as Superintendent, have two children that will attend in school in hybrid model in the district. My wife is an educator in a neighboring district and has been attending since November. And my mother would be coming back and is certainly considered in that category that should be the first to receive the vaccine. So there are, there's a lot of intentionality that we have placed in moving forward. There's a lot of trust that has been placed in our COVID Response Team, and we recognize that many of our staff members and our community are trusting us, again, with their most valued treasures themselves and their families and their children, and we don't take that lightly. So I do want to call out that we do continue to receive notifications that we are doing the wrong thing by people, but we are also receiving notification from people saying, we're happy that you have taken the protocols and you are moving forward. And we, again, recognize that the call coming from the governor, supported by the Superintendent of Public Instruction, and then also supported by our Yakima Health District, is that we mitigate circumstances moving forward and do reopen, which is what we are committed to doing at this point. I do look forward to next week. We will have an additional update coming from Dr. Darling on the reentry plan moving forward. And we are working, and it looks like we will be able to secure a representative from the Yakima Health District to come and speak with us in person. So if you are receiving, if people are coming to you as board members, or if you are observing this out in viewing this meeting, I would encourage you to just share with others that our business meeting next Tuesday would be a good one to attend to hear directly from our Yakima Health District. And I look forward to hearing that support straight from the district themselves. Because as much as I say that, I don't think it really lands as it will next week in having a Ryan Ibach potentially present with us. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Otherwise, I'll turn it back over to you, Martha.
Just one additional comment, and this is, this goes out to our Spanish-speaking parents. I think it's a worthwhile announcement. The Health District is hosting a Facebook forum tomorrow evening at 6:30 PM in Spanish. So parents and families that wish to get information about vaccine from physicians, they'll be hosting that tomorrow. So if there's a way that we can support getting the word out to our families that have access to Facebook and use that service.
Thank you. I think I need to schedule my pre-meetings with Norm right before these board meetings. So we are all over that, Norm. Every week, you come up with something that we're just like a day ahead of you. So thank you, because I know if we ever drop the ball, that you'll be there to make sure that we are taking advantage of those opportunities. So we are excited to support the Yakima Health District. I did receive notification of that meeting from La Casa Hogar, who we value as our strongest community-based organizational partner. We are thrilled with the engagement that we have had with them, and that partnership continues to grow. And I do have it on my calendar to attend that session as well, to hear firsthand what is being shared with our Spanish-speaking community in a setting that is not directly related to our district. So thank you for pointing that out, Norm. We're excited to have that out as well.
Okay, I have one other tough question to toss out there to everybody that I have read all the comments that we've received as board members, and I'm not going to comment on those. But there was one question in one of the comments that I think is worth considering. And it goes to what we're hearing from the governor and from Chris Reichdahl and around the state, and that is that we're asking people to do things that we're not doing ourselves. And that would be, if we had all the protocols in place, should we, as a board, you know, addressing all the protocols the same way as students and teachers entering buildings, should we be meeting in person again? And with masks and socially distanced? And obviously, we have a directive from the state about doing that. But we're, you know, I think it speaks a lot to say, you know, we're asking students and teachers to do things that we're not willing to do or haven't done yet. So I think that maybe needs to be discussed. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Martha, would you like to comment, or would you like me to comment first?
I'll just make a brief comment. I appreciate that, Norma. I read that comment as well. Unfortunately, we could get ourselves into some legal trouble because the governor has prohibited us from meeting in person. And until that resolves itself, either he rescinds the state of emergency order, or the proclamation, or the Senate removes its resolution, our hands are pretty tied. We're not going to be able to meet in person as long as all of those things are in place. And I understand, I completely understand the the contrariness of the position that we're in by asking students and parents to, and to, to, parents to send their students and staff to come to school. But we, our hands really are tied right now, as far as that goes.
Yeah, and I understand that part, too. But I think that's also a question we need to be asking the governor's office and the superintendent's office, and maybe even the legislature, because the legislature is meeting distance, and they're not meeting in person. And so, you know, we have, we have some real consistency issues here. I think that it's a, it's a question to be raised. I'm not, I'm not proposing an answer for us right now, but I think it's a question that's worth raising.
I don't disagree. Trevor, do you have anything to add?
No, I agree as well, Norm, and I did respond to that much in the same way that was shared by Martha. So that was a concern. I thought that was a very good point, and I think the best that the board could do, and maybe not tonight, but if you were to decide that, were we to be granted that option to return in person, then I think if you were able to declare that at some point, we could then message that out to our community and say that even in spite of what is being shared across the state, if we were given our choice, this is what we would do. And I don't think that we have done that. And that is an option that does remain for us to do, at least to say in word that we would be willing.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, next item on the agenda is calendar scheduling. Mr. Superintendent, do you want to kick this off?
I would be happy to. Thank you so much. As the board may remember, you may recall last year, I believe it was convocation, we had a, an administrative intern that worked through that process and provided a wonderful opportunity to engage in systemic improvement for us during a time of COVID and not being face-to-face with our, with our students and with our community. Each, each year, we have multiple opportunities to engage with our, our administrative interns, and it's very important for us to provide a pathway for them to demonstrate some of the abilities that they have. And tonight is a similar opportunity as that one last year was with the convocation. We have a calendar scheduling presentation, which, what this is, was a way for us to, as a district, systematize surveys so that we were not inundating our community with survey after survey, or survey on top of survey. And what I requested from Mr. Chris Whitehurst, who is here to present this evening, was a way that we could better align what we are asking of our community without burning them out by responding time and time again to what is out there. So with those loose guidelines, I of course gave more guidelines than that, but that's the intro. Chris moved forward, and he put together a system working with, I believe he worked with our communications department at the time. He did present to our entire leadership team some months ago, but I wanted to get him in front of you so that you could see the caliber of interns that we have coming through our system and the pathway to leadership that we are putting in place in the Yakima School District. So for the short presentation, I'll turn the time over to Chris Whitehurst. Chris?
Thank you, Superintendent Green. Welcome. Good evening, board members. President Rice, thank you for this opportunity to speak to all of you and kind of share this work that Superintendent Green asked me to do for the district. I am going to share. So this is just a rough master slide, I guess, of the presentation and the, and the work that was done for the district. Like Superintendent Green said, the whole object of this was to make it so that we had a system to track all of our surveys. We weren't burdening the families, we weren't burdening students, other community members. And so that was the task that him and Dr. Darling came to me with. And so I, I took it, I ran within his guidelines of where we thought this would go. I took it back to my team at Lewis and Clark and kind of bounced my ideas off of them. They're, they're great. Their support was awesome. And what we came up with was a system to track all of these surveys and a way to keep all of it in one space. And when we needed to add to it, we could then go through a process of adding it in a way that we would not overburden these families, parents, students, whoever was taking surveys. So the idea that I came up with was putting it all on an interactive Google slide. And so these slides, this first one houses all of the schools in the district, and it even has a district slot. So it's interactive. Each one of these is actually a link. So on the actual copy of this slideshow of this other slide deck, you can click on any one of these schools, and it'll bring up their information, the surveys that they have available. And so at the beginning of all this, I surveyed, I reached out to all of the administrators, got their input and their list of surveys that they typically do. And we created kind of this calendar to weed out and look at all of the surveys that were there, the ones that we felt were important, that needed to go on the calendar, that would overlap with other things, noting that we didn't include some of the really small surveys, like the general staff day-to-day, just general questions. It was more along the lines of the, the SS survey, and some of the larger things that the district normally sends out or the schools send out. So if I was going to click on Lewis and Clark, and this one is the example that I'm going to use, because that's where I'm from. So if I were to click on Lewis and Clark, it would take me to the Lewis and Clark page. The Lewis and Clark page here at this point houses all of the proposed surveys that we have so far for this year. So we did the CEE survey, October 29th through November 15th was about the dates that we ran that survey already. Notice it says students, staff, and parents. So we say who the survey is for, what survey's for, the date that we're going to run it, and then who is it targeting? Because some of these do target different groups and different stakeholders in our community. So this was the idea that I came up with to house all of this and make it all available in one location and one spot for us to refer to. So then, we took that information and everything that's in one of those slides and added it to a district Google Calendar. So admin teachers, everybody uses a calendar every day. We decided it would be really easy to get a view of that by taking those dates and those surveys and slapping them onto a calendar that you could actually look at. So instead of trying to go back and forth between the two, now you can just pull up the survey calendar and go, I know which surveys are going out in the month of March, for example, here. So here, at the end of March, we have proposed the next district thought exchange surveys. Those dates can change, and they can go in and edit all of this stuff as we go. Like Superintendent Green said, I worked with communications, Kirsten Fitterer, Ashley Larrue, they were both awesome to work with. They got me involved in the thought exchange program that the district started using, and we collaborated on how to do that first thought exchange that the district sent out this year. So they were, they were also very instrumental, being they were the group of people who were instrumenting, they were implementing and using this as we move forward. So once we had all of that set up, the next step that we needed to do was figure out how we were going to keep track of any new surveys and items that they wanted to add to this. And so working with Kirsten and Ashley, we came up with a step-by-step process and sent out a memorandum of how to apply for a new survey to go on the calendar. First, obviously, is to look at the Google Calendar we have established and make sure nothing overlaps. Second was then to fill out an application. There's a short Google form that we came up with for administration to fill out if they wanted to add a survey, which would then be reviewed by Ashley, approved or denied. If it was approved, it would be added to these slides and to the calendar, so everybody could see it. If it was denied, it would be sent back with a explanation of why it was denied, or maybe it just was a date change. It overlapped with too many things, and they request a different date. So I did reach out. They, they said that so far, the program is working well. Ashley had not had any issues with it so far. So I was, I was glad to hear that. Are there any questions at this point? Kind of went through that a little quick, but...
Any questions from board members? Comments? Chris, it sounded like you were trying to wrangle cats.
It, you know, at the very beginning, it felt that way. But once we had an idea of all the surveys and realized that a lot of them actually overlapped and were the same surveys that the district could send out as one survey, I think that helped us narrow it down quite a bit and, and made it a little easier from that point.
Do we have instances where individual classroom teachers are surveying the parents of their students?
Not, not that was reported to me. I'm sure that there are teachers that send out small surveys here or there. But as far as a large scale, that was a whole grade level or a whole school, none, none that was reported that way.
Okay. Any other questions from board members?
No questions. This is Graciela. I think my video is off. But just want to thank you for this work. You know, I think parents and students, I think, can sometimes be overwhelmed with the volume of requests that they get from the district. And so I like that we have a very planned-out approach to soliciting feedback from our families. Thank you for this work.
Anything else? Board members? I would agree with, I would agree with Graciela. It, when, when I was reading this in preparation for the meeting, I thought, oh, my gosh, that's an incredible amount of work. So I want to thank you, Chris, for taking that on, trying to keep all the frogs in the wheelbarrow, so to speak. It sounds like it's going to really be helpful, not only for the district in kind of coordinating all of this, but also ease the information burden on parents and families. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you, Chris, and thank you, board members, for allowing me to take some time, some privilege to show that to you today. We do not do this very frequently, but when we do have our administrative interns who have engaged in a, in a systemic process, we like to share that out and know that it means a lot to them. It means a lot to us to recognize their hard work. So appreciate your time tonight, Chris. You're welcome to stay, but thank you so much for presenting.
Thank you, Superintendent Green, Dr. Darling, for the opportunity. Board members, thank you for watching my presentation.
All right. And now I'll pass it back to you, Martha. Thank you for, that concludes the informational items this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to share.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of board attendance at the 2021 National School Board Association Annual Conference in virtual fashion. I know that Raymond and Don indicated last week that this is something that they'd be interested in. Do you have the... I know at the end, I know at the end of, I think it's February, the end of the month is the cutoff for early registration. We do have an action letter attached to the agenda. I don't know that I read the cost for this. Do we, do we know what that is?
I don't recall what it is, but I can look it up here pretty quick.
Raymond, do you remember?
I believe it was $800 registration fee, I'm thinking. I'm not certain, though.
Would you both be sitting, it's a, from April 8th to the 10th, so it's potentially a total of two days or three days, depending on how long they go. Do you anticipate being a part of that virtual conference for all of those days?
I'd plan to. I would love to.
Yeah, me too. That was the plan.
Okay. All right.
And it looks like it's $600 for early births.
Oh, good. Are there any questions from board members?
No questions, but it would be good for us to kind of plan out the continuing education for the year, just to make sure we don't go over, over budget with requests.
Yeah, we have, we typically do that in the fall when we set our calendar. To my knowledge, this is, this may be the first conference that we've had a registration fee for.
Yeah.
The Equity Symposium that is being held on Wednesday of this week is free of charge. The WASDA Annual Conference was free of charge. The ledge commit, the ledge assembly, the General Assembly, excuse me, was free of charge. So I think we're probably well within our budget at this point. I don't know of any others that are, go ahead.
So was the layoff of charge, and keep also was free of charge when they held it virtually.
I don't know.
I don't know what it's going to be this year.
Do we know of any others that are coming up that might have a registration fee attached? Maybe not. Okay. Okay, um. So the requested action is that the Board of Directors approve attendance of board members Raymond Navarro Jr. and Donald Davis Jr. to the 2021 National School Board Association Annual Conference, held virtually April 8 to 10, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded by Don. Is there any other discussion? Jennifer, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Donald Davis Jr.?
Aye.
Graciela Villanueva?
Yes.
Martha Rice?
Aye.
Raymond Navarro Jr.?
Aye.
Norm Walker?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing from you guys about the conference, especially since you've been to in-person conference, and if this is comparable to that. So maybe at one of our later in April meetings or early May meetings, you could give us a report? That's a question?
Yes, we will. Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, no, go ahead. I have a quick, I have a quick NSBA question. Are we... I have a quick NSBA question. Are we automatically members of that? Or is there a membership fee to join that? Or what is that?
There is a membership fee to join National School Board Association. And we also there's a there's a group. Don, I don't know if you remember. I want to say affiliation. I don't know that that's right. But if you're a member of that group, you do end up getting a break on registration fees and things like that. Jennifer, do you remember what that group is?
Are you referring to KEEP? Are you referring to KEEP? No?
I'll think of it probably about 10 o'clock tonight.
Okay. I know that we get a break because we're affiliated with WASDA as a state-affiliated association.
Does anyone have a sense of what that registration fee is in order to be a national member? For an individual?
An individual person?
Well, I mean, do you join as a whole board as a group?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
You join as a whole board, but some individual board members could choose to be members of certain caucuses.
Oh, okay.
They have Hispanic Caucus and an Asian-American Caucus and African-American Caucus, right?
Okay, so are we a member as a board of that organization?
Of NSBA?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay. So that leads to my second question is, they've been sending me a website called Legal Clips, which is information on legal stuff, but I can't access it. They won't allow me to access it. It doesn't recognize me as having a membership, or and I haven't pursued it further to see what the hangup is, but.
I think there's you have to use your NSBA password. And I, quite off the top of my head, don't remember what mine is, but I would expect that if you either replied to that or sent an email to NSBA, they could tell you what your password would be.
Okay. Okay, no more questions.
It's okay. It's all right. Next item on the agenda are preapprovals of board discussion rating reports. The first one is the rating report for Policy 1000.3.2, Board Job Description. This is one that we reviewed last week, last Monday. And it went out to Survey Monkey and all five board members responded. All five board members agreed that each of the elements, the board was in compliance, and there were no comments on the survey. Are there any questions or comments from board members on 3.2 Board Job Description? Okay, I'm going to take on both of these, maybe with one motion when we're done. The next item is the Board Rating Report for Policy 1000.3.3, Agenda Planning. Again, this is one that we reviewed last Monday. It went out to Survey Monkey and board members, all five, responded. All five agreed that all the elements of the policy, the board was in compliance with, and there were no comments in the survey. Were there any comments or questions from board members on 3.3 Agenda Planning? Okay, seeing no comments, I would entertain a motion in accordance with established policy to approve the rating reports for 1003.3.2 Board Job Description and 1000.3.3 Agenda Planning.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Both by Norm, seconded by Don. Is there any discussion? Just as a reminder, this puts us in is allowed for... We are allowed to do this in accordance with our existing policy on monitoring reports, so if there is no other discussion, Jennifer, could you take the roll, please?
Sure. Donald Davis Jr.
Aye.
Graciela Villanueva.
Yes.
Martha Rice.
Aye.
Raymond Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Norm Walker.
Aye.
Motion carried 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda are items of board interest. Are there any board members who wish to bring anything to the attention of the board?
Martha, I just want to clarify earlier comments that I made. Will I be able to do that during the study session?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, you know, when it comes to the color of the topic of colorblindness, I wasn't talking about colorblindness in the context of racism. And I know that's what kind of definition we've been using, so I'm trying to sort out what definition we're using, so I wasn't speaking to colorblindness as a form of racism. We all do see color. I mean, it's impossible not to see the color of the person sitting next to us or in front of us. We see it. It's impossible to do that. I can't take away your color. You can't take away my color. That's impossible as well. And we shouldn't discount color, physical appearance, right? And I understand the impact of color and race, because I've felt it. I've lived it. And, you know, our country, as great as it is, it does have a horrific history of racism and cruelty and dehumanizing people. And I do, I realize that, and I know that, and I'm agreeing with that. Again, we all have been, most of us have been victims or been discriminated against because of the color of our skin. So I just want to just to clarify for me, and again, this is a journey we're taking, and thank Dr. Pimpleton for guiding us on this journey, because it's causing, I guess in psychology, it's called cognitive dissonance, right? And it's causing me to think and to challenge and to be critical and those type of things, and look at both sides, and it's really stretching me. So I just wanted to clarify. I know that racism exists even today. Disparities exist, and we saw in the earlier slide today. And we cannot discount that. We can't discount race, racism. So what I'm saying is that race or the color of our skin is that first layer of a human being, right? That's the first thing. And oftentimes, we make judgments based on that, right? When I was younger and I was on Machista, I would see a white person. What was the automatic thought I had? Oh, that person is racist because they're white. Right? They're the man. They're oppressing me and so forth and so on because they're white. So what I'm saying is, in terms of colorblindness, we have to get past that. We have to acknowledge somebody's race, the color of their skin, value it, and know that it's important to that person. We're not discounting it. We're not saying it's not important. We're not saying, you know, you're not Latino, you're not black, you're not this or whatever, you're not the color of your skin. So I'm just saying, for me, it's a good... And I come from more of a psychology, where you get past that front, the physical, and you get into the more deeper level of knowing a human being, talking about their experiences, their past experiences, their worldviews, and getting to know them on a visual level, because we all are unique human beings. So I just wanted to just to clarify that I did not in any way intend for my comments to indicate or to somehow say that or to mean that colorblindness has anything to do with racism. So I'm sure there's a definition that does say that equates colorblindness to that, but I just wanted to clarify my or your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Trevor?
Thank you. I really appreciate Raymond sharing that with us. It's so important, and I think it shows the depth of the work that Marcus is engaging us in, and it really takes me back to our plan this year to engage all of our partnerships that we have in which we're studying equity and really taking the time to assess our own growth. But the importance of vocabulary is so important, and I appreciate Dr. Pimpleton calling that out in his lessons, that unless we're on the same page, it does create confusion and creates a gap that is not meant to exist. And I personally am thankful for Marcus and his help with our cabinet, because we do the same type of studying in a cabinet on a weekly basis. And we have embraced a true definition for us of what equity means, and my thoughts go back to him. Marcus saying to us that if we don't have that same understanding of the definition, then we could be completely off, even though we think we're talking about the same thing. So I think that Raymond has modeled that perfectly for us in clarifying what the vocabulary means to him and calling out that it can mean something different to each of us. And I do believe that it gives us an opportunity, and perhaps Dr. Pimpleton will consider this, of even coming up with that definition of of what colorblindness means to all of us and what other definitions we can establish in common so that we avoid misinterpretations as we go forward. This is critical work, and I'm so proud of where we are right now compared to where we've been, and thank each of you for speaking your truth, as you have done in our study sessions, and for Dr. Pimpleton in guiding us in this opportunity. Thank you for allowing me to share that. I do have two other things I'd like to bring up when the time is right.
Okay, let me just finish with this. Thank you, Raymond, for for being so open with your comments. I really appreciate that. Marcus, do you have anything to add to this part of the conversation?
I just really appreciate what, you know, that we had a conversation that ended an hour ago, and we're still percolating on it. And so I really appreciate that. And I do recognize, you know, that idea of a colorblind, you know, in sociology, you know, racial classification does not impact the opportunities that people have, and that as a definition of colorblindness. The problem is, we don't actually live in a society where that's the case. And so when people say they're, "I don't see color," they are, you know, they're making a statement that has certain connotations and associations to it, and so that's a tension that we're going to be in, but I really appreciate all of you guys participating. I mean, this would be hard. This is like, people are watching you on their computer screens and you're, you know, being vulnerable together and really engaging in it. So I appreciate it, and don't, you know, I don't know. It's a so many things are just kind of like, if we were having this conversation in the house and just who we were is different, you know. So I really appreciate everyone taking the time to just wrestle with the tension, and I agree that what Trevor said, that we just have to be clear about what we mean, so that we're talking about the same things, and I think that we're making a lot of progress here.
And just to piggyback on that, I think it's important that when we hear words, we may attach a meaning to that word, or we may have a set of assumptions about that word or what it means, and so it's always important to check assumptions and never assume that, because that word means something to me in some way, that it means the same thing to somebody else. And so I think that's just an important part of this whole process is to check our assumptions, and also ask what we mean when we're not sure.
Well, Norm, if you may know that there's probably three or four definitions written by scholars of colorblindness.
Sure.
And three or four different theories on that.
Sure.
And exemplars that are out there studying those theories and further developing them. So I don't know if those are assumptions or principles or what, but you know, so that's part of my thing is, which definition are we going to latch on to, right?
Sure.
Four, five, or six, or whatever is out there. So I'm using my personal frame of reference, my life experiences. As we all do, right, that first layer is our life experience. What are we going to attach to, how are we going to develop our worldview, like Dr. Pimpleton guided us today in terms of those multiple, you know, racial perspectives, how they develop. So this is a great conversation. I wish we could just continue to talk and discuss and learn, mostly learn, so and so we can do what's best for the district.
I got a suggestion for our next meeting, our next Monday meeting, President Rice, that we take two and a half hours on this. I'm being honest, because I'm serious, because this, you know, the colorblindness definition can mean various things to various people, but until you live the experience of it and experience it, right? And it's about the heart, right? And reality is all about the heart and the values of your heart. And if you want, that's how you change from colorblindness to see people as equal, because you take on a character that, you know, I ain't going to preach, but you take on the character of your Creator, and you show that love, grace, love, mercy, and kindness, right? And it's about the character of your heart. And to get rid of racism and colorblindness is to look at each individual as a human being, right? And then when you can do that, then you can overcome those definitions of colorblindness, because you're looking at every person as a human being. You're looking at them as your brother, your sister, as yourself.
Amen.
And that's what it is, right? And, you know, I'm passionate about this, and y'all know that I'm passionate about it. I lived it, and I appreciate Raymond, what he's saying. I appreciate you, Martha, for how transparent you are. I appreciate Graciela, opening up like she's opening up. I appreciate Norm. But until we look at each other as human beings and have a heart and treat them with that love, that grace, that kindness, that meekness, that... This is a long-suffering piece of thing that we're going to go through and is going to be with us, but we are making the attempt to do it, and that's the key, right? So let's just say, colorblindness to us is, we don't have colorblindness. We're looking at each other as human beings, trying to make a change for better. Let's use that, and then from there, we can move, right? Right? Forget about all the psychologists and all the... It's not about that. It's about the heart.
You're absolutely right, Don. You're absolutely right.
I'm being heard. Thank you. No, it's serious. I'm serious about this, because it's short.
I know. I know.
We can do this.
I was.
We can make this change.
I was smiling, because for two weeks now, I've said we don't have it long enough for these sessions.
I'm willing to do two and a half, three hours. Me, because this is so important. You know, it is Trevor over there laughing, because I had told him that we could do a whole meeting on this, where we can... Because I think, you know, we have too much lapsed time. And I'm glad Raymond brought this back up, because it needed to be said so that we can move to that point, right? And respect, but let's respect each person as a human being and move forward. And then that's when you get rid of the skin color piece, the colorblindness piece, because we're looking at each other as human beings, and we want the best for each human person, for each human being, right? And I'm just excited. Thank you, guys. Amen.
We couldn't tell, Don. This may be a conversation for a later time, not necessarily today, but we do have I don't know. We don't have a Monday meeting next week, do we?
No.
No. We do have one coming up, I think, the week after. We're at, we're at one of the schools as well. But we could, let's, let's think about this, think about, we don't have a meeting the Monday before a business meeting. Think about if we want to make that a whole study session on this work, the Monday afternoon before the business meeting. It may be more than your schedules, your individual schedules will allow. But let's, let's think about that and maybe talk about it at a future meeting, okay?
Martha, this might just blow up, because if we do that, we might want to look at the work and the writings of other exemplars in the field. Because right now, we're looking at two, 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 two literature, two works that are very similar in their theory and their philosophy. So perhaps we can look at other exemplars, African-American exemplars that are out there, you know, thinking about different ways of, of, of thinking about racism, or different ways, ideas on how to, to, to change racism or deal with it. So just another thought, we're getting, it's kind of getting bigger and bigger, but.
I see Trevor's got his hand up, but I expect Marcus has a whole library that we can tap into. Trevor?
I, I just want to remind the board that we do have a retreat coming up. So when we're looking at extended time, that was one of the topics I wanted to bring up, was just to flag the board retreat for all of the members, because there are things that we do need to plan for. So that is the, that is an option.
Okay, so it's the middle of March sometime that we've got the retreat scheduled. There's probably 150 other things that we have on our calendar of things to do as usual during our retreat. But maybe one of the items to discuss during the retreat is, is how we're going to tackle this work. And what, what amount of time are we willing to give to tackle this work? But as Trevor indicated, we do have a retreat coming up. If there are things that you all would like to add on to the retreat agenda, get those to Jennifer so that she can add them on. And if you could get those in by the, the 22nd of February, that's two weeks from tonight. That will give us time to kind of plan that, plan that meeting. Trevor?
The last item I had, yes?
Yes.
I just did want to bring up that we had had a conversation, Martha, you and I, potentially about a pilot of a Zoom call document, so using a Zoom with a interpretation services that occur simultaneously. We did use this service with the Equity Coalition last week. Marcus Pimpleton led the, kind of the research of the organization and tested it out. We could test it out for our, our, our business meeting, which again, would allow, we would not have the back and forth of waiting for the translation, it would happen at the same time. The downfall is we would switch to Zoom for that call, and I just need to know if that is still the desire of you? Or is that the desire of, of us moving forward to pilot that next Tuesday?
Thoughts from board members?
I was on that, that very call idea, and it worked very well. Interpreter action to English, and I heard the person in real time versus stopping and waiting, and it worked real. I'm for it, if we would do that, just try it, and then we can make a determination afterwards if we'll continue with that.
Thoughts from other board members?
Sounds like it would be really efficient and maybe redo some of the awkward pauses or the longer sentences without stops that make it challenging for the interpreter, so I would certainly be in favor.
Norm's got a thumbs up, Raymond's got a thumbs up, two thumbs up from Raymond. So let's try that, then. We'll try that next Tuesday for the business meeting. Jennifer will send us out new links, and we'll try to remember not to come to a Google Meet. Anything else, Trevor?
Nothing else.
Just a reminder, in the legislative arena, all of the bills need to, need to be out of their original committees. So the House bills need to be out of the original Policy Committee next Monday. So by close of business on Monday, any bill that has not been cleared out of their original Policy Committee in, in concept dies for the year. Now, nothing dies in Olympia, it just comes back in a different form. But there are a number of them that the Ways and Means Committee are trying to get through their process. And so we're following that pretty closely. Next Monday is the first deadline. And then in a couple of weeks, there'll be a deadline to get out of the originating House. So all the House bills have to be out of the House, and all the Senate bills have to be out of the Senate. And then they start the whole process all over again in the other, in the other House, so. The Thursday phone calls, the COVID networking calls, about half, at least half of the time is now turned over to legislative reports from Marissa and Logan. And there's, I don't know if you all have registered for the in-session mailing that comes out on Fridays. That gives you a good wrap-up of the week, and you can get to that through the Strategic Advocacy webpage on the WASDA website, and just register for that mailing. Mr. Superintendent, do we have a need for executive session?
We do not have a need for executive session this evening.
Okay, is there anything else for the good of the order? Okay.
I just wanted to say that NSBA is having an Equity Symposium on February 10th, and it's free, and I registered for it. It's going to be dismailing institutional racism, and it's going to be a.
Yeah, it's from like.
Just. From, well, it's what, 10 o'clock our time, because.
Yeah, I think it runs from 10 to 3 or something like that.
Yeah.
So, you know, middle of the day, seated for extended periods of time, but it's on Wednesday. So if it's something that you're interested in and you have some time on Wednesday, the, when they're in person, they're very good. So I would expect that they would still continue to be good in virtual. If you have time, I would encourage you to register and just go to the NSBA website. There's, I expect if you type in, do a search on Equity Symposium, you can find it. So anyway, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, have a good week.